Now, we're gonna go ahead and start our regularly scheduled meeting. Starting at 5:03. So let's start with roll call again.
Jane McGee.
Here.
Jim Heigl.
Here.
Nancy McKay.
Here.
Philip Morris.
Not here.
Tiffany Nix.
Here.
Julie Sanders. Tara Detless.
Here.
Keith Honeycutt.
Here.
And Alvin Crawford.
Here.
And do I have a motion to read or dispense with the reading of the public hearing notes from July 10?
There are no additions or additions from the last meeting. The motion will be proven. Second.
And then, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any nays? Okay, so now, can I have a motion to dispense with the reading or reading of the regular meeting minutes from July 10?
So this is...
Is that good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Now, the next minute, so we have a motion to read or dispense with the reading of the public hearing on July 24.
Oh.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And the last one can have a motion to read or dispense with the reading of the special called meeting on July 24.
That's a move.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Alright, now, last one, a motion to adopt or amend the agenda for today.
I'm going to win that.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And any nays? Okay, so we don't have any old business to take care of, so we get to go directly to the new business, which is Parks and Recs here. And we're gonna talk about the recreational center site.
We brought the architects with us. We're here today, this is, I believe, the third time to come to Plating Zone. We want to present to y'all today how we got to choosing the site. We're gonna ask y'all today for a site approval. I believe that we've got the list completed of everybody that's been asked of us to go through this process. We've been in contact with East Alabama, and obviously our architect's been working on this as well. And Ryan and Miss Cynthia here is gonna do a presentation for you to tell you how we went through the process of picking this site, the requirements that is needed in order for us to pick a site, and basically how we got to land on this piece of property. And after that, we will address the issues that y'all brought up about pedestrians, traffic, you know, buffers, all these things like that. Okay? I will let them speak.
Do we need to... I can't see, so I guess I gotta come down.
Good afternoon. Steve mentioned, we're with Williams Black Site Architects. We're the architectural project. We've been working on this for a couple of years now. And as Steve mentioned, there's some history to the project. We'd like to just run through it quickly with everyone. So the reason we're here is to seek approval for the location of the new rec center. Secondly, we wanted to run through the understanding, the history considerations that have been studied by consultants, the city, officials, staff, public involvement, and determine the location that is appropriate for the site. And lastly, we'll present how the site meets the necessary criteria for conditional use, of which we will be seeking later. A little background. From 22, 2022 to 2023, Parks and Rec master plan was implemented. Purpose was to assess all city facilities to develop long-range needs and goals. The committee had 12 members from state leaders and boards, and included public input from community surveys. It was determined that the needs were, as from the surveys, indoor pool, additional ports, primary additional needs. It was also needs of development upgrade long range for each facility. And then lastly, the potential location of the future rec center. The committee involved many people who are in the room tonight. City Hall provided a list of potential properties which were studied before we were involved in the project, but was, we also were involved in some of the studies of these sites as well. The sites were evaluated on certain considerations such as property availability, size, visibility and prominence of the property, walkability, community impact is a large portion of it, and activity hub, proximity to other recreational sites. The selected site was the property that is off of North, it's near North 10th Street, between North and Broadway. It's owned by the city. Project is appropriately sized for 50,000 to 70,000 square foot facility. Fits well on the site with parking and future growth possibilities. It's highly visible, central to the area, walkable with minimal new sidewalk crossing needs. And it's close, it's across the street from Noble Park as well, and not far from J Craig. In 22, I mean, 2023 to 2024, there was feasibility study about the preliminary design and layout. Budget studies were conducted for us to nail down the size of the property, what's needed in it. And so we found that there's a requirement for conditional use of the property because the current zoning of the property, and there is no zoning actually for this type of facility currently within the zoning ordinance. And so, we did a preliminary site layout, scope, presented at city council, and bonds were sold for the new recreation center based on this study. 2025, we have been working on the design of the rec center. And then, tonight, we are starting the process to get conditional use approval.
So we'll, if this is kind of a little bit of a precursor for the conditional use that we'll be going for, but we just wanted to go ahead and talk through the points that this site is meeting all of the requirements. So this will be the new recreation center, the proposed use to fitness area, indoor swimming pool, indoor gymnasium. Project overview, there's been a significant amount of stakeholder involvement, community involvement, everything like that. We've collected a ton of public input. And then, this conditional use criteria is what we'll talk about, just really quickly. So again, this is our site, as you've been a little bit more, again, all of these considerations were thought through when we were selecting this site for this use. Like Ryan mentioned, we're in downtown Business District. There's currently not any recreational use for this zone. So just, some of you may have seen this site plan before. This is generally the layout that we're proposing for this project. And again, you can see the proposed script to the left here. So access and safety, your main access point would be off of Broadway. More of a parking area, there would be a service entry off of Central behind, so that would be service, a kind of jump around, that would be trash, servicing the pool, the gym, hiding, screening, everything back there. Plenty of off-street parking for this site. As far as screening and buffering, plenty of landscaping to tie this in. Exterior lighting will be considered with uplighting for the building. There'll be lightings out before the parking lot. As far as signs, we are probably going to do just a small monument sign on the nature, just right off of Broadway. Impact controls, we've been working with our civil engineers for stormwater runoff and solutions for that. So ultimately, we will have a detention pond at the west side of the site with an ashore to take that up there. We will maintain the existing structures with the culprit on the site now and deifying that. Utilities, this site currently does have connections for water, sewer, power, all of the infrastructure. So we'll be working with our engineers and anything to be upgraded or added. As far as building form density, as you can see, there's a ton of permanent open space still on this site. We preserved the south portion for future development as well as the west portion. As far as character and images, I know we've showed some of these before. We'll obviously be working with the city on character and how this building ties into the city. So these are just a few different inspiration images. And then lastly, I know you all have seen this rendering before, this was a conceptual rendering from, at the start of the project, so. That is, that's about it?
Any, any questions from the commission? I think all of our initial thoughts were how do, how do we get kids to it that could be coming across Highway 21 near Broadway? Maybe from the Noble Heart direction? So that was a concern that a lot of the commission had, that we wanted to address.
So on that, as many of y'all know, I walk Sulicaga streets five days a week, every morning. And that's something I've really paid attention to, is the current layout of the sidewalks that make our town walkable. And if you've ever been out at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, there's about 20 of us out walking and running up the streets. So if you follow the current sidewalks that are located there, obviously, we're not gonna have any kids crossing 21. They're at the four-lane intersection, or even at 10th Street where everybody's diving in off that other lane. So what we would do is do the crosswalk painting right there in front of J Craig Center, and encourage traffic to start heading that way, but end up at Norton. So where you cross Norton and 10th Street, behind Chevron, behind Jack's over there, this draw from here. You'll see where we kind of got a landing center, and I touched this thing, and it went crazy. But we have a landing center right there on that corner, and there'll be a walkway that will take you directly to the front of the rec center. So pedestrian, we don't want any kid crossing somewhere there's not a red line. So they currently, when they visit J Craig, they walk that right across from 8th Street right there, across another Broadway. And we would encourage them to come up Norton, the existing sidewalks already there, and then we're gonna develop this and have a walkway that carries them straight to the front of the recs.
Do they go over the ditch?
There's already a landing, there's a land bridge already here, so our sidewalk will cross that.
Is the ditch gonna remain open?
The ditch will be open, but looking way better than it does right now.
I was gonna say, who's in, I know this isn't, but who's in charge of completing those?
I'm, I'm not sure, it's not Parks and Recreation. Until we get to that point, it's really coming up. But we're using the same landscape architect that we use for Pickleball. Where Pickleball's going, there's 163 three-gallon plants going on that small piece of property. He also did Railroad Park, if you've ever been to Birmingham. He'll be the one designing this landscape, so I assure you, it will be something huge, for sure.
One thing worth noting is the preliminary discussion was loud up. And right now, there's not a requirement for a traffic light in front of this facility based on the preliminary traffic studies. That doesn't mean that there won't be one in the future, but as of right now, in the preliminary stage, that's not a requirement. But if there ever is a traffic light needed there, obviously, that would be your opportunity to tie in again with a crosswalk.
I have the comprehensive plan that we did in '20, and they projected traffic in up to '23, 2023. And it's 14,500 cars a day. Lot of them, and that's 18-wheelers. I don't know if y'all were involved in '21 when the utilities department had that fire and shut down 21. Well, I lived right across from that. And I was amazed at the number of 18-wheelers that we had coming through our town.
And that's a plus and a minus. It's a minus for pedestrian traffic, for sure. But, you know, a lot of that traffic turns off on 10th or goes in different directions after that. But when you come through town, you know, we have red lights and crossings already in place to help people to get to the other side of Broadway. But I will say that's a plus because people passing through our town see our investment into our community, so.
And also, too, the kids on that side of town, they have to cross the street to go to J Craig and walk to school. So I mean, it's still, he's talking about the same path. So they still have to go to that life and cross the street to go to school and to J Craig. So since there will be a walkway, it'll just, it'll just be a little easier. And then, right now, it'll probably be a little better because we got kids, when I come down 21, I see lots of kids crossing just trying to go to Jack's.
That's true.
Yeah, so maybe...
We had a personal hit. Do you even have, down the road, a thought of a pedestrian crosswalk over the five lanes of traffic?
You know, the only one, I've been here almost 50 years now, the only one that I remember was Pine Crest. The city decided to tear that down instead of maintaining. So I, I honestly can't speak to such a capital project like that. That would be infrastructure that would come from Michael Rice or somebody like that, would have to make that break.
Thinking big, Miss Nancy.
Do what?
You thinking big.
No, I just know a city that's just done it.
Wow.
Over Highway 31 is awesome.
I mean, I would be all about that life, but it's not in Arbut, I can tell you that.
So that's not anywhere in your realm of having, getting some money to do that?
No, I mean, not currently within the bonds that's already been sold. I mean, obviously, going forward, that could be something that's addressed. But from what we experienced, the walking traffic through Sulicaga is more north-south than it is east-west, especially in the morning times. And, you know, people that I see that are crossing during the day, whether it be to go to school or whatever, generally use an 8th Street that's already established with a walkway and a red light there.
And it would be good to do things to encourage those kids not to cut through and try to run across right there, because that is a pretty dangerous spot.
It's, it's a dangerous spot, for sure, but, you know, it, it... People say, if you wanna know where to put a sidewalk, see where people walk across, grass, kill. Right? And, you know, that could be something definitely in the future. The sidewalk does extend over there in front of Noble Park, the original sidewalk, but it actually ends there. It doesn't continue across the street with the arboretum toward Allen Stairs and all that is. So that's kind of the starting point anyway for Sulicaga Sidewalk Project. And hopefully, that's something that the city can decide to continue in the future. However, that's not a parking wreck decision to be made. But, you know, we would have definitely encouraged them to make the city more walkable, for sure. But our goal of this location, we had a graphic that I think we showed y'all last time. It's kind of the ribbon of driving through Sulicaga downtown. I mean, when you come into town, obviously, you're greeted by the beautiful trees, but then you got Bed Decks Park here, you got Central Park here, you got the Board of Education, you got the rec center, the school, Noble Park here, and then we're gonna get back and you're gonna make that turn into Beautiful Rec Center here, and then obviously, you got the middle school down the road. So we're trying to make, you know, this, we want to encourage people to come downtown Sulicag. So we're hosting swim meets, and we're hosting volleyball tournaments and basketball tournaments. Chances are, they're not gonna have time to run out to 2A during the middle of the tournament to eat, so they can run right downtown to support a lot of the businesses.
Of course, walkability was, you know, for the committee and the community input was about connecting as close from a pedestrian standpoint as possible. And, you know, the other sites that were an option were on the periphery of this, of the city, which walkability becomes even more difficult, or you're, you're less likely to walk to a lot of the other sites. So that was one of the reasons why those groups, I think, focused in on this one, is how close in proximity it was to a lot of residential communities.
Because if it's anything like our current rec center, when the high school lets out, that gym would be packed. And that's where most of the kids live.
The ingress and egress, off of Broadway?
They're still being studied.
That's, that's kind of the discussion, for sure. It really depends on how bids come in. I would say one of the first alternates would be continue more parking across the land bridge over here and utilize that lower property below the substation. We've tried every way we can to find access to Norton. And if you've seen the grade, if you've stood on the property and looked at the grade and stuff like that, it would definitely be an undertaking to get on the north side of the ditch to meet that, the grade needed to get there, and then you're gonna have a weird intersection. So our plans for future parking, or hopefully current parking, would be to use that land bridge. And we actually had a drawing with parking there, and then you would have access off of Norton. But, you know, money basically tells you what you can do.
It was a part, it was in the master plan. It's a phase two, phase of this project.
So phase two of this project is that parking area, and then putting a dog park behind the Chevron right there. That's kind of face of this project. Depending on how bids come in and when they're open, you know, you don't, you don't know if you can do anything until the contractors turn bid in, you know, with that money.
In previous meetings, I recall that soil testing was done, and the depth wasn't sufficient, and we were looking at moving the building back, is that still standing?
Where the building currently stands, it was moved based on the soil studies, from the borings from the geotechnical engineer. That has definitely been a consideration in this layout of this building. And it can still shift slightly based on current conditions.
Well, there is a site approval, and it will be able to hold that side building.
That's, that's, it will, yes.
Yeah, Mayor, Michael Rice has looked at that for us. And there will be some structural field that happens in those areas where the soil is soft, but it's not an obstacle, really, for this side. And I will say, too, I mean, talking about site proximity, I know this area of our community hasn't seen a lot of investment in a very long time, this sort of area of it. So between the Parks and Rec project and earth, it's gonna see about $60 million of investment in this area, which I feel like could have an impact in the future on everything around it. It's sort of like a tsunami, I would describe it, that it will have an impact in time, not immediately, in the entire area, and hopefully, we can start to see some improvement in some areas where we've had sort of disrepair and tragedy for a while.
How many acres are staying downtown Business?
All of it. We're just asking for how much.
No, I mean, once, you're not gonna, you're not gonna take the whole amount, from what I understood, you're gonna leave a corner or a corner, commercial.
It's all currently, well, minus this portion right here, is MX2. The rest of it is downtown Business District. And currently, we're just asking for, we will be, will be asking for conditional use approval for this site, for this use.
May I have?
I have for the, for commercial development.
It might be even larger.
Is it still the corner there?
It's that corner.
Yes.
So right there is where the, the commercial property is.
Is that kind of a pretty big core drill?
Actually, it's not a big core drill. That's the next step. There's another geotechnical study that comes once you get a building footprint, obviously, the site approval, for 100% on that site, that comes next. What has been done or tested is, if you can remember, it was a dig excavator, basically digging until it couldn't dig any further. And of course, it found bedrock, just like everything on the earth site is found, because we're really close to that main base, and now on both of these properties. So it's been tested geotécnically, because the council actually requested it. Councilman Nix, I think, requested of us, and we did it, that probably did about six months ago.
Six months ago?
I'm probably rookie on the table on the commission right now. And I find myself being 14, 15 years old, my partner's going to the facilities that's not there, continuing to sell by traffic. But looking back on my life, that that rec was there, I crossed on it over to 3rd Street wherever I could, on a sidewalk, maybe last night, sidewalk. So I don't see where, in my mind, that's prime road state. And I look from outside looking in, we're landlining our sales costs. The ability to have some business on that site that will bring more money downtown than a rec. Off 21, this study's been done by whomever is finding funding, but I still have a question in my mind about the kids' safety, traffic, and just the general location, because we are 2A bound to build businesses out there. But there's part of town that's just on this side, 2A also. And I'm having issues trying to figure out how would I cross that street if I was 14, 15 years old without in school or not, to get across there. I don't wanna cross it, wherever I come out, come up it. There's no way to stop it now, and that's a hot traffic. We had a couple accidents, I believe, up there over here, where people got getting just crossing the street in general, went back to watch those apartments on the hill, where it was going, I don't know where it was going to. But it's still an issue to where prime road was placed, landlocked city. And a rec is a great thing to have, some is a great thing to have, but the location?
So we went based off the properties that were given to us, and that's what we had to work with without purchasing property, obviously. And most of the properties that we looked at, I mean, there was big talks about 2A. Obviously, you got locations out there next to Home Depot and everything else. You know, your CBA and your industrial development stuff are gonna shoot that down as well. But we, we've spent about a year and a half looking at sites, for sure. And this is the one that, basically, it was, it was the last one left for us to choose, just to be honest with you. But it's, the thing that we need the most is visibility, it needs to be in the center of town, it needs to be accessible to all communities. And this one has access by road or even foot traffic to, to me, this spot. Because a large part of the people who do end up shooting at the gym, I've been there, I've been with the rec 22 years. I was on the board before I worked here. And the people who I see day in and day out are coming from the school. That's our busiest time of year. During the summer, when kids are walking across, I mean, they're, they're mostly behind the rec center. They're going back and forth to Jack's, they got practice at the school, and they're going back and forth that way. I rarely see kids, and when I do, they're crossing on 10th Street, for sure. Now, to say that a kid's not gonna take a shortcut, I mean, sure, that's, that's gonna happen. That's gonna happen if you put it on 2A, you're gonna have a kid running across the highway, for sure. But, I mean, we have not found a location that's not near a main road to give us visibility and accessibility to everybody, including foot traffic. I don't know that that property exists in this world.
Well, and, and too, you want, you do want this kind of property on a major artery. There's a large volume of people coming to this. So you wouldn't wanna put it on a secondary street, right? You wouldn't wanna add the load for, you got people from Birmingham, from Huntsville. This is gonna be one of the nicest aquatic centers in our, in our region, without a doubt. People from all over will be coming to it, and being close to a major artery actually makes a lot of sense. And I'll talk a little bit about the development of that parcel. I mean, no one has looked at it or wanted it for years. And I think the reason is, there is some site infrastructure that needs to be done, build the facility. I just talked about with the mayor that you're gonna need some structural field in this property. I can't imagine anybody else looking at Sulicaga, knowing what's available, we've got flat land all over the place, would want this site. I think the city is the most likely person to develop this site. As long as you save areas for commercial development, which this master plan does, I, I don't imagine anyone's gonna come to Sulicaga and say, "That right there is where I can build a building for the most economic way." There will be some stuff you have to do to the site in order to build on it.
But, you know, with that said, we're building an attraction that's gonna bring people to this location. And now that site, I've been here for... And now that site, I've been here 48 years, there hasn't been a business in 36 of those years on this location. This corner up here, if I own a hot dog stand or a Jack's or something like that, I've got a captive audience now. So now this should make that corner over there much more appealing, for sure.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
We have two new members that have just come on board. Do y'all feel like you need to go through this and look at it? You need a little time to process this? Could we possibly table this for them to get up to speed?
So what we'll do then is we can table the vote until next meeting. And does everyone feel like we have all the information we need? Anything else from Stephen or group?
I don't guess the PowerPoint you did, could they have paper copies? Or some kind of copy that they could?
Yeah.
Because they're kind of just out here trying to.
Yeah, we can choose.
So what will happen if that's core drilled and there's a problem? What will happen, I think?
Well, what happens in a geotech situation is when they do a core drill, all you're doing is figuring out the solution to make the building possible. They're, they're going to core drill, keep, and they're going to hit bedrock. So there's only a certain amount of soil to be tested. And if it turns out that all the soil from the top to the bottom, which is about eight feet, nine feet, needs structural field, that will be the solution. Is to add struc-, to excavate and add structural field. So there's, I can't imagine a scenario where it comes back and you say, "Absolutely, this is not possible." Because we've already done the preliminary studies, and that's not what came back.
Well, the reason I'm concerned about that is because years back, they were sinkholes out there.
Well, you know, during this, there was debris discovered during the, the excavating. All of that was, in the areas where that was happening, I don't know about sinkholes, but where trash was put by some group, maybe even city at some point, that was actually found present. That's over around where the parking lot is. And there wasn't enough of it to really be concerned. Yes, some of them will have to be removed, but they didn't see a big issue with that. The sinkhole that we've been told, and there was a map that went around that was, of course, everywhere in this community has a sinkhole in proximity to it, was actually across the road, where Aldees, close to Aldees, various offices. There wasn't, on the diagram, there was no sinkhole present or ever been present on that diagram that the city has on that side, across the street, yes.
Uh, Ms. Nancy, I have a question. I remember before I got to be on this board, back when Ms. Lucille was here, Lawrence was here, and Jeff was here. This had already been discussed, and we, and we came to the planning commission and got all of our ducks in a row, and everybody had agreed on this site, because, again, we had brought the other sites to the planning commission. And I guess we thought it was just understood that everybody was on the same page, that the community center was going to go on this site, because, in fact, the council didn't even choose the site. But now the members have changed. So is that going to hold up the process because the members changed?
They just need to be brought up to speed. I would have been the process. But you're right, you came several months ago.
We did, and that's, yeah.
Our first meeting with y'all about this site was in October of 2023. And the site has not changed at all.
Philip, do you remember when they came and we all said, "Yes, go ahead," because you wanted to make sure, before you invested more money, that this was a feasible location?
And we've already invested a lot of money, because we were under the impression that the planning commission was on board, because we, again, got all the ducks in a row.
Yeah, there was a verbal go-ahead pretty much in our last meeting for us to go to the site face, about this site.
That's what I thought, but I saw that it was a site plan approved. I was all confused.
Ms. Cat, I was as well, because I, I was just, we, we initially thought, six weeks ago, we started working on this, that we, our next phase was conditional use. And I was told last Tuesday that, "No, you got to get the site approved." And I'm like, I kind of thought we'd been through that process. We're, we're now asking for an official site approval, because we can't move forward with conditional use until that happens.
I don't think there was a vote, Ms. Nancy. It was a, it was a verbal agreement. That's the reason that the city moved forward with this site and these plans, because we were told by some people everything we had to do. And Steve got that list of everything that was supposed to be done, and he checked that list off. And then he just got some more information saying that you guys had to put in paper to approve this, well, put it on paper, put it in writing to approve the site.
Steve, do you have, uh, Michael's report yet on engineering, other than?
Yes, sir. Michael's the one's been working with us. He's the one talking with Aldi. And he's the one who's come up with the drainage and the stormwater stuff.
Well, 21 has to be permitted. We need to know probably.
Yeah, we've been in a conversation with Aldi, and they didn't foresee a traffic study being needed. You know, we don't get to tell them that we need a traffic study. They tell us.
Well, I know he's had insurance errors.
Yeah.
I just want to know if you've gotten your report from the HRT.
What specific report are you asking?
And everything we get in the bond is based on this site, too. Let's keep that in mind. So the bond that we went and got is based on this building going on this site.
So the sticking point right now is that we need the two new members to have time to look over it. And there's some debate over, our East Alabama representatives have said that we don't have to have a public hearing, but there are a lot of people saying they would like to have one.
But that's the part.
And they, and they said that we, that if we feel like the city needs a public hearing, that that would be appropriate to do. So now we've got to figure out how we can get that through quicker in our next meeting for you, so that they can have time to look, we can satisfy everyone in the city if they want to come to a public hearing, and we can go ahead and vote before our next meeting, so we can call a public, or quicker. How much time has to, do people have to know?
You have to give it at least two weeks to run in the paper and notify people.
And what kind of mailings are we talking about?
You, they probably need to do a really good ad in the Daily Herald and advertise it on Facebook and all that.
So no individual, no individual mailing's going out?
You need to mail to all of the apartment complexes and everybody around that room.
So what just, what would be your recommendation from the East Alabama Regional Planning Commission?
Because it's not provided for in the zoning ordinance specifically or the state statute, we couldn't really speak to that. I have seen public hearings done with a week's notice, and that's typically what's provided for in citizen participation plans for grant applications, for example. So it, it really just depends actually orally on, on what's done for that specific thing, but it's not provided for in your zoning. So that would be the determination of the planning commission.
But you're saying that we don't have to have a public here, but it would be nice, is what you're saying, right?
And is that what?
According to our review of the city's zoning ordinance and the code of Alabama, it is not required by law to have one.
More a site.
For a planning commission.
Now, do zoning, yes.
Yeah, we know that we have to have one for the conditional use for the rezoning, for sure. And I guess my argument, when you're saying you're asking for public opinion, like, we did surveys for two months, two years ago, that was sent out in everybody's utility bill. We did social media posts with a QR code that took you to a survey, let you take it. We have that information in. And there were public meetings back then with a committee that was picked by city hall. We didn't pick this committee. City hall picked this committee. They made sure everybody, every entity in Silicon was included in that, including the president, you know, at the time of planning and zoning. So public input is what got us to the needs that we have and the site that we picked. It wasn't us walking around or Steve saying, "Man, I wish I had this." Like, we did the surveys and everything, and we used the information that came back from the public to make the determination of, first, what we're going to build, and, second, where we're going to build it. One of the questions on the survey, the city was broke out into quadrants. Actually, I think there were six or eight different options. And one of the main questions was, where would you prefer for city expansion to be for recreation facilities? And F was the answer to that question. And F basically goes from Comber School to Burnley Palms and from Fort Williams up to Central Avenue. So as you see, we're at the very top of F in that, that process. So public input has been definitely a part of this process. You know, delaying this another month, when we're already making bond payments, to me would seem like a problem. But, I mean, honestly, we'll do what we need to do. So we, like I said, we thought we had a verbal site approval. And now to say we got to wait two weeks or a month to have a public hearing to have that, and then you can't vote on conditional use without an additional public hearing, you're going to delay this two to three months.
I thought we only had the 500 feet, something of, when we do the rezoning, there's a foot. Feet, and that you let everybody within that perimeter of that many feet know about it. Or the apartments way down. Am I correct?
Shannon, what's the radius for when we do like a public hearing?
It's normally 300 feet from the property line. But let me also say that we have had two sports complexes and two school sites brought to the planning commission, and there was a public hearing held every town.
Was there a public hearing to decide where that piece of property should go, or just an opinion of that?
For site selection.
We've done that through the committee process.
But you have to have a public hearing through the planning commission, because that's the way it's always been done.
I don't think that's written.
So do we have to? Hold on, hold on, hold on. So does it have to be done at tar, or is it recommended?
It does not have to be done.
Okay.
It's not on the, what East Alabama bound.
And that's what the experts say.
But our, our issue could still be that we have two gentlemen on the commission that haven't had an opportunity to see any of this, that are, that need to be able to vote and understand.
And we would love to meet with y'all individually at your convenience to answer questions and go over the process that's gotten us to this point and answer any questions that you have. I mean, we could do that tomorrow. It's just whatever convenience is.
I have a procedure question. So if it gets, if this vote gets delayed to the next, um, meeting, can, can the group already go in and get prepared for that meeting for you guys to vote for the site selection and the conditional use process, so it doesn't delay really our schedule right now?
So we wouldn't be able to schedule a public hearing for the conditional use or the rezoning, whichever one we determine has to happen, until we voted for the site? So that would be where we could get mixed up with some time there in 2023.
And also, I think we need to be really straight on what's going to be asked. And I'd love the planning commission's opinion on this, too, or East Alabama's opinion. It's, we're not looking for rezoning. That, that is not something that we're looking for. It will be a conditional use that we're, that we're pursuing. Does that sound correct, East Alabama?
It, it really falls up under interpretation of definitions of the ordinance based upon the definition of institutional use in your ordinance. We believe that it could fall under that. It is not, and a recreation center is not under the definitions, but it is listed Recreation Facility Public under three of your business districts. So that would be up to the planning commission and, I believe, your ordinance says the building inspectors determine which use is most synonymous with. Does it fit better under institutional use? Or does it fit better under Recreation Facility Public, which would be under those three businesses?
So institutional use would not require conditional use? It would just require to rezone to the one that has an institutional use?
If they could determine that it would fall under institutional use at 76,000 square feet, that's what we're looking at, right? That would be a conditional use under its current district. If it's determined that this has to fall under Recreation Facility Public, that would go under either the B1, B2, or I district. Recreation Facility Public is a conditional use under those.
So those are also conditional use? So no matter what we do, we still are requesting conditional use for any zoning?
If you do have to go with one of the business districts, you'll have to rezone and then get a conditional use.
So no matter what, there's no accepted use? So no matter what we do, we still have to go for conditional use?
Yes.
So that's what we're proposing for any site, because if it's, for this site as is, we're proposing conditional use, because we'll have to do it no matter what.
Yeah, you're saying, no, if it's, if it's institutional, sorry, if it's outdoor recreation, or I forgot what you.
Recreation facility public, this one's in the ordinance.
That one, for, for a rezoning.
Yeah.
And then a conditional use in addition to the rezone, under what we interpret as it's just a conditional use.
And that was our reading as well, just looking at the definition of recreational use. I'm hearing that internally, when the ordinance was created, that perhaps institutional use was meant to be just for schools. I don't know that the ordinance specifically spells that out, which is, which is why the planning commission's going to have to take a look. There is a section in your ordinance that lays out what you need to do, and it's not clear what a use falls under. And so you would need to go under that process to determine what use categories facilities may go under.
I have a question. So if, for some reason, the planning commission doesn't decide to, I guess, say grace over this, can the city still move forward with this project?
Yes, even if the planning mission denies this, that it will, they will provide their recommendation to the city council, and with a two-thirds majority vote, the city council can move forward with the project anyway.
Is that for the conditional use or the site selection?
That is for the site selection.
How much additional time would it take for the two, um, new members to be fully confident and up to speed to next vote? I don't know how long you've been on the committee from, from the start, but.
Probably a week, I mean.
Two weeks max.
So can the planning commission schedule a meeting for two weeks?
We do a call. And then we can make it better than that, so allow them to get every call.
Let me ask you this. Public hearing has been announced 14 days, right? So if you say two weeks, and then we have a meeting and y'all make a decision, and then we go ahead and schedule the public hearing for your already scheduled second Thursday planning and zoning commission, would we possibly still get a decision at that time?
That, is that, is that correct, a public hearing? Well, how long do we have to have for that? When we did your vote in, in two weeks, and give these gentlemen some time to get to know the project and what's happening, and then two weeks after that, have the public meeting at the regular meeting? Or the public hearing at the regular meeting?
I'd have to look into the public meeting or public hearing is required, to be honest with you.
It is required for the conditional use, for sure.
Probably required. It's just like the one we have for rezoning, too. If you have the rezoning, you got to have one, like we just had.
So can it all be done at the same meeting, because that's still going to push it out another month? If you do, if you have the special call meeting, and then you're saying, "Make a decision on one thing, and then in two more weeks, make the other decision." So that's still going to push it out a month. So can everything be done in the two weeks?
It can, we can't do the, we can't do a public hearing for the, the, the use there to change the zoning or to use, to use it differently than the zoning says, because we haven't approved it yet. We got to vote for it, and then we can have additional use.
That was kind of our question, asking if you could schedule a call meeting in two weeks to vote on the site. weeks to vote on the site, and go ahead and advertise immediately after that, which is two weeks. And then we're still on the same timeline that we currently anticipate.
Can you set a public hearing from two weeks from today?
Y'all can talk to them.
It has to be after the site's purple.
Steve, y'all can talk to them.
Yeah, I'm gonna give y'all my personal contact information, and I have my phone every day, and I wake up at 4:30 in the morning, so that's your commitment.
You're gonna get a.
They're rushing to get this by a certain time?
Well, I mean, obviously, we're paying money on a bond payment that is, with the city's taxpayer's money, and the city don't have anything to show for. So I guess we're waiting to get a shovel in.
That's on the money being invested, also managed, but anyway.
It is, but I mean, that wasn't the initial use, wasn't the bank money, it was to provide assistance for the community.
And that was the reason the sales tax were increased.
Can you get them a PowerPoint copy?
Um, yes.
Both of these?
I mean, I can email it to Mrs.
Tar has a possibility every day.
Okay, she's got the PowerPoint. That they can.
And then I have supporting documents that created this PowerPoint, going back to our initial meeting, we're planning and zoning in October of 23. We had another meeting in May, and then, you know, I spent two or three of y'all's last meetings trying to keep y'all abreast of where we are in this. So we, we fully expect it to be ready to go today. We understand you've had some turnover on your board, and we don't want anybody making rash decisions. We feel extremely comfortable, you know, if we had a one-on-one conversation, we can convince you that this is the site. So we, we've exhausted every other opportunity that's out.
So we need to determine, uh, two weeks from today? Yeah, we need to figure out two weeks from today. So they're not good with August 28? August 28? Okay, so we'll move a call meeting in August 28, so that we can vote for them, for the site. Since you're there, we'll make a, a date for a public hearing, two weeks after that, for the conditional use.